I'm going to bring this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, good evening. Let's see here. Mayor Pro Tem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas? Mayor Paulan Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas is absent. All others are present.
Thank you, madam. Next on our agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Pro Tem Pat Kearney to lead us in a place of allegiance, and Doris Hoffman will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With all of this happening in our world, our state, our nation, and all around, politically pandemic and all, I thought this was a fitting scripture to remind everybody of. It's found in 2 Chronicles 7:14. It's probably very familiar to many of you. If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sins and will heal their land. Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the United States of America. We thank you for the government and for our founding fathers who founded it the way they did. Be with our leaders and may they continue to honor and to respect the founding fathers. And Father, be with all of those who protect us. The first responders, our firemen, our military, our policemen, and even those, Father, that we know nothing about that protect us that we're not even aware of. Thank you again for your presence. We love you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Doris Hoffman, for those words of inspiration. Moving now to the presentations. Tonight we have a presentation, water shortages contingency and state's mandatory water conservation. Oh, yes, ma'am. Catherine Nutting, I didn't recognize. I thought it was you, but I...
I'm half covered up there.
That was you. Thank you for joining us from Golden State Water Company.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I do have a short presentation for you today, so Mayor Paulan Miles, councilmembers, thank you for having me. I'm Kate Nutting with Golden State Water. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about what Golden State Water is doing in addressing the drought situation in California. So just as an update, Governor Newsom did declare a drought emergency in 50 of the 58 counties in California. Not LA County, thankfully, but approximately 95% of the state is in some sort of drought situation, some exceptional drought. Therefore, the governor has asked all Californians to try to reduce their usage 15% over their 2020, excuse me, usage. So things might get worse before they get better. Unfortunately, NOAA is predicting a La Niña winter, which means warmer temperatures and another dry winter. So to talk about Landale, Landale is supplied by both groundwater and surface water from Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Metropolitan Water District has issued a water alert. However, because of investments they have put into storage and things over the years, they're actually in pretty good shape for this winter. However, if we have another dry winter, we could be experiencing shortages here in Southern California next year, which is why we're trying to conserve now. So what Golden State Water Company has done is file our Schedule 14.1 with the California Public Utilities Commission. It is our detailed outline of mandatory conservation and rationing programs, and it does require PUC approval, which is why we filed that back in August. And we are required to have a public meeting where we talk to our customers about it, and we actually did that this afternoon. It was a webinar via Zoom. So right now, we're proposing to implement stage one of the plan, which is the water alert stage, and it's voluntary conservation only. So we are asking customers voluntarily to try to conserve 20% used, or 15% less rather, than they used in 2020. We're encouraging them to limit their outdoor water use to three days per week based on their address as listed there. And there is actually something in place for people who are blatant water abusers, people who overwater, so there's runoff all the time from their lawns. They're constantly using water to water to clean their hardscapes, like blatant abusers. We have the ability under this plan to install a flow restrictor, which actually limits the amount of water they actually can use. And if we do that, we are able to implement a charge to those customers, and the fees are there based on the meter size, and it covers the cost of installation and removal. If we were to install a flow restrictor on a customer's meter, it would stay there for at least seven days. So these are all the other stages that could be implemented. If we don't achieve the reduction goals that we want, if we have a bad winter and we have to reduce more water, we would implement stages two or all the way up to stage six, depending on the severity of, you know, the situation. So the, depending on the stage, we will then allocate the amount of water that each customer can use, and it'll be look at the customer's 2020 water usage and reduce it by the percentage shown based on the stage, and that will be their allocation. And if they were to use more than their allocation in a month, then they would be charged a surcharge for the amount of water over and above the allocation that they use. So customers would never be asked to reduce usage below 800 cubic feet, which is about 6,000 gallons, so no allocation would be less than that. And customers would be able to appeal that allocation by through our website or by calling us if for some reason they felt like the, what they were being allocated was not reasonable or fair. I do want to say, though, we are not proposing any allocations at this time. Right now, we're just asking for voluntary conservation. It's only if we had to implement a higher stage that we would have allocations. So I'll skip this in interest of time, but I will say, you know, the last drought in 2014, Golden State Water customers did a great job saving water, especially our Southwest District where Landale is, so I anticipate it will be the same today. We do want to work with our customers to help them with whatever we can to help them conserve, so we have many, many conservation programs that are available to customers from free water audits. We will come out to a home or a business and go through it and help, help customers determine how they can save water. We have all, we participate in all kinds of rebate programs as listed there. If you go to our website, www.gswater.com, that'll list all of our different conservation programs that are available. So just to talk shortly about next steps, if we were to go into a higher stage and implement those allocations, we would need to get approval from the CPUC for that, and we would also notify all of our customers directly, so they would have plenty of notice if we were going to implement a higher stage. But on the longer term, you know, one of the things that might cause us to implement a higher stage is if the state does implement mandatory water use reductions based on what happens this winter. And also just to let you know that longer term, the state is looking at implementing indoor and outdoor water use standards for all customers. So within the next 10 years, we're likely to have a requirement for all customers to have indoor water use at 55 gallons per person per day or less, and they're going to ratchet that down, actually down to 50 eventually, and they're also looking at implementing outdoor water use standards down the road. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Let's see if we have any quick questions. I just have one, one question, but let's see if anyone has any questions. Just a question, you know, these rain barrels are pretty, pretty popular, but they're hard to come by. When would you have another, how do you go about distributing the rain barrels? When are those opportunities presented?
Okay. Yeah, thanks for the question. That rain barrel program is actually implemented by West Basin MWD, which we're a customer of West Basin, so they do those programs, and normally they look at doing one in each of what their kind of service areas each year through each of their directors. And I can definitely get, I'll get the schedule on that and get it to Julian. What they have been doing it differently this past year, they used to have big drive-throughs where you go and pick up your rain barrel, and I think they're individually kind of delivering them to customers now, you know, at least for the time being. But I can definitely get more information on when Landale customers might be able to take advantage of that.
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate that. Yeah, those are pretty, pretty popular. The last one I went to was in Hawthorne, and it went pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah, they are popular.
Before the pandemic. So, yeah, that'd be something interesting. That's another question that I have. I want to thank you for bringing this conservation program to our attention. Hopefully, it will remain a voluntary conservation program in that we will adhere to such because it's, a lot of people don't really appreciate, or some people, I should say, may not really appreciate the fact that it's really real, you know, in terms of a water shortage or what have you. You know, you take it for granted, when you turn the water on, it usually comes on, but, you know, we're constantly in war with, I use the word lightly, with the northern partners of north, because they say we use too much water, and so that's a real fight, you know, unlike whiskey is for drinking, you know. Water is fighting, you know that, that, that is. But we want to thank you for your, your presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, the next, oh, I have this one here. Okay. So let's move on to our public safety report. Let's hear from, you, Captain Lee, Lieutenant Lee, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Phil. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for August 16th through September 6th. On August 18th in the morning, the Operation Safe Streets parole compliance team conducted searches on two locations in the city of Landale for non-compliant parolees. They arrested a Landale 13th Street gang member on 166th Street for an assault with a deadly weapon warrant, and he was booked at South Los Angeles Station. On August 22nd, at about 5:00 PM, Deputy Rodriguez conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle near Rosecrans Avenue and Prairie Avenue. While contacting the driver, Deputy Rodriguez noticed an object sliding down the driver's shorts. Deputy Rodriguez immediately searched the driver and recovered a concealed handgun hidden in his shorts. Also found on the driver's person was methamphetamine. The driver was arrested for a possession of an unregistered firearm and possession of a controlled substance while armed and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On August 31st, at about 6:00 PM, a victim was robbed of his watch at the Lightning Car Wash on Hawthorne Boulevard. Before the deputy's arrival, the suspects fled in the vehicle. Deputies were able to obtain information through their initial investigation, which resulted in the suspect vehicle being located on September 1st with a possible suspect being detained. With further investigation detected, we'll be continuing the search for the additional suspects. On September 6th, at about 2:00 AM, Deputy Dominguez conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle at 164th Street and Inglewood Avenue. The driver admitted to being in active probation for a robbery. During a probation compliance search of the driver's vehicle, Deputy Dominguez located a firearm underneath the passenger seat. The driver was arrested for possession of a firearm by a felon and booked at South Los Angeles Station. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to end it. Any questions you may have?
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions in this report? All right. Thank you, tenants, for their report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the items from the City Clerk Department. Let's hear from our city clerk. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gubernatorial recall election will take place on September 14th, 2021. Landale voters will have a variety of opportunities to cast their ballots early. Every voter will have received a vote-by-mail ballot. For early in-person voting, 11-day vote centers opened on September 4th and will go to Election Day. Four-day vote centers will open on September 11th and go to Election Day. On Election Day, September 14th, 2021, polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. The City Clerk's office is proud to announce that in partnership with the LA County Registrar Recorder County Clerk, the city of Landale will host two one-day vote centers to provide a safe and secure option for Landale voters to cast their ballots in person. Vote centers provide modern features to make in-person voting safe, easy, and convenient. Vote centers also serve as a vote-by-mail ballot drop box location. No need to wait, you just simply drop off your vote, your voted ballot at the front. A flex vote center will be held in the Heraldly-Hoffin Community Center in the second-floor meeting room, 14700 Buren Avenue, on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, that is tomorrow, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. A mobile vote center will be held at Landale City Hall Courtyard Civic Center at 14717 Buren Avenue on Monday, September 13th, 2021, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. To find the nearest vote-by-mail ballot drop box and vote center location to you or for more election, sorry, election resources, please visit lavote.net or you can call our office. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item is oral communications. Oral communications, when you have an opportunity to speak to this body in the Landale City Council on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would just approach the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. And at about two minutes, the amber light will come on and it'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
Rendell Abrams, long-term Landale resident. After being suggested by residents for years, the city of Landale finally recently established an administrative process for code violations. This creates a system that does not threaten court action as the only way to conclude a code violation. Previously, those that gamed the system realized that all they had to do was to stall on correcting violation until just before it finally went to court. In some cases, this took years. Now, in a much fairer system, those that violate city codes are presented with options to correct violations before monetary fine is imposed. In many cases, the violations are resolved quickly when one knows it is going to cost them money if the violations are not resolved promptly. There is a fair administrative citation appeals process providing a hearing procedure to challenge a violation that does not tie up the courts. In order for this improved procedure to work, however, you must have code violations enforced. Unfortunately, Landale's reactive approach requires residents to report proposed violations to code enforcement. It becomes a resident's jobs to snitch on their neighbors. In many cases, this only happens if your neighbor has ticked you off for one reason or another. When I regularly walk around the area, I can easily spot violations, I can easily spot perhaps five to 10 code violations. Is it my job to stop what I am doing, write down the number, and call code enforcement? What makes this more difficult is now that, is that now due to recent policy change, a resident reporting an incident has to do all the violations on a property before called in. Apparently, if an address is reported as a code violation, only the code violation reported can be acted on. If the code officer sees other violations on the property, he has to blind his eye to the other violations that are in plain sight. Potentially, this could leave unsafe violations left on the property and a unnecessary return visit to the property by the officer. When a Caloosha inspector comes to a worksite due to complaint, they not only require corrective actions on the original complaint, but identify other violations they see during the visit. The city of Landale's code enforcement officers have similar powers, as the municipal code states, I quote, "Code enforcement officers are vested within the authority to gain compliance with the provisions of the code. These powers include, but are not limited to, the power to use all judicial and administrative remedies available, including issuance of administrative citations," end of quote. With new businesses and now homeowners, and new homeowners coming into houses close to a million dollars, should not the appearance of the city reflect this. The city's reactive approach to code enforcement must adjust accordingly. Code enforcement officers must be given the authority to complete their jobs and cite any violations when they visit a property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, a promise. Pam London, last City Council meeting until I come back for a visit, and I'll make sure that I get to come to a meeting. As Mr. Abrams was talking about code enforcement, we all know what an issue I have with it and what an issue I have with this, oh, let's all become little tattletales, because I'm sorry, but in kindergarten, we were taught that being a tattletale was a bad thing. But when we moved to Landale, we're told that being a tattletale is the only way that you're going to get anything done, because code enforcement is reactive and not proactive. And now, they're not even that. They are driven by one thing and one thing only, a, a single or a multiple code turn-in. But code officer sees things that I don't see, because I don't know the code like they do, but, you know, too bad, so sad, they can't do anything. And Mr. Chung, I think you're part of that, and I do believe that I had told you, things need to change in this city with regard to code. We've got the codes on the books, let's enforce them, not tie anybody's hands and prevent them from doing so. When my inspection was done, when I sold my house, she could only come and look at my parking situation in my garage, she couldn't address anything else. Normally, she would have addressed everything that she saw in my property, but not anymore. So I'm putting this on you because you are the city manager and the buck stops with you, and that would be what Mr. Mandoki would have said had he still been here. So I'm leaving, and I can already see the downward turn and the spiral of the downward turn with regard to code cases and with regard to people and their maintenance of their property. Now you have the water. This city is nothing but dirt and weed yards everywhere. So now we'll have more excuses for dirt and weeds to your knees and parking in the front yard and so on and so forth, like we had in the last drought, unless something is done to stop it and to teach people that we're not rednecks, this is a city, we have codes, let's follow them. We don't need to look like crap. So as I look at you, when I say these things, these people have heard me for years, not you, as many, you, I know, because your dad, he's had to listen to it, but I can't stand it. I cannot stand to look at the city and know how, how it could be and how it once was becoming, but under your direction, I think it's just going to go right back downhill. And the rest of you, I don't care that nobody likes me. It doesn't hurt me a bit. My thing is, I came to this city, I complain when there's a problem, and I expect some answers. I expect fixes. Otherwise, what?
So look back, and I will keep you that. And Landale needs to wake up and look for experience. People coming into the city or a job that needs improvement.
Thank you, Ms. London. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. London. And I'd be remiss not to throw a flag on the field for the derogatory language, just to make a note of that, keeping it, keeping it all fair, but we want to thank you for your, for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You know who I am, Sandy Falcone. I live at the House of Congress in the millions, Amanda. I hope you've all gotten a copy of the research, a report that I left for you. It is by no means conclusive. I mean, a couple minor, minor mistakes, one is not giving your name properly. I know all of you have lives, you have tragedies, you have losses, you have germs, you have family, but you also chose to run and protect our community. Part of protecting our community is protecting the safety and health of the people that live in it. 91% of our youth are 18 and under. We have 45% homeowner occupied, with 65. something percent are renters. Non-smoking is needed. This is a complex issue, you're going to require a lot of support. I think there has got to be a grant organization out there to help you. Ideally, I'd like to see more of this going to affect January 1, but that's probably not realistic. I do hope this is not just lip service on your part. I hope you will really listen to people and look at some of the facts that I have in the report. I've tried to be as honest as possible. I just, we need an ordinance protecting non-smokers. There's a branch of the World Health Organization that gives us human rights. The United Nations has all kinds of resources to help us and to help the city. I'm going to do further research on that. It may be a couple of months and due to travel out of the country for a month or two on business, but I will make every effort to find out what the regulations can do to help us, and I hope you take that human rights issue seriously and the health of our community. Our governors are charged, from many sources, with looking out for the health and safety of the community, and I don't think there's anyone here who doesn't understand, the exposure to secondhand smoke is a health and safety issue. Thank you very much for your patience, and as I said, I do hope that you will take my request seriously, and I'm willing to do whatever I can to support you in that process, and I do not give up.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, are there any others wishing to speak to this body? Your, your time starts right now.
No, I can walk and talk.
No, of course you, you don't have to walk and talk. I was just being funny. Come on down. Go ahead to the mic so we can, make sure we can hear you now.
Hi. I would like to address two concerns of mine, which seems to be a year old. I pass them on to the administrative part of your office. I try to speak to the neighbors. We have too many gun shootings or fireworks or disturbing noises during the night. I live off Freeman Avenue, so there is a big park which belongs to the school. Last year, as we know, the school wasn't in use, but the park was available at certain hours for walking dogs or just exercising. Thank you, by the way, for putting some, what would you call it, children playgrounds in that park, Anderson Park. But the reality is that the fence which is by the gate of Manhattan Beach, which is bordering the condominium complex adjacent, that fence is broken and tilted for two years that I observed, and I addressed it, because I saw skateboarding people just scrambling over. Remember, it's a private property. I spoke with the association, I spoke with the owners on those units. They said it's very little the city seems to regard as needed. That fence needs to be reinforced and secured, so if you say the park is off limits, please make it off limits, because those people who are interfering are probably the one after dark, shooting whatever they shoot in the air, making us scared. In addition, the dog starts to bark, the children start to cry, so you have a lot of various age group community being affected by those night noises, which can be avoided if the sheriff patrols from the Manhattan Beach side along the park and see where things crack up in the air, because fireworks, even before, long before 1st of July and long after 1st of July, I don't know the difference between legal and illegal, but at 2:30 AM, it's illegal. Doesn't matter where they bought it, how long they had it, that's before 1st of July, they should not be available to have a space to produce their cracking jokes. But the jokes are on us, the community not sleeping. Warning, if it's a 911 call, needed. Warning, why do 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 sounds come and you don't hear any passing by official vehicle? You don't see any lights? So remember, going out on the street to see what's happening nowadays.
Time is expired.
Yeah, go ahead and wrap it up for me, ma'am. Okay, go ahead and wrap it up for me. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll provide some comments. Thank you, thank you for your, your comments. No, you can, you can have a seat, if anyone wants to address them, they'll, they'll do something.
That would be lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Give me your name. Give me your name. Did you give us your name? Well, you look familiar, but you know, you're in disguise, so make sure. Go ahead, give it to the...
That is mine.
Just your name. Okay, that's fine. Okay, let's move on to the city council comments for the council. Councilwoman Suarez.
I'll make it short. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. I will ask a question regarding the last speaker regarding the, I think what I gathered, where there was people sleeping on the benches. I thought that we were looking at upgrading some of those stops, and one of which is usually the benches where they put the ridges in between so that people don't sleep.
Yes, Councilmember Suarez, thanks for the question. We have been looking at programs for gaining outside funding to improve our bus benches and bus shelters. That is something that we had been looking at previous to when Mr. Lee came on board. And that's something that we can continue to look for, to improve our shelters. But however, on the question of maintenance, that is a very valid point. And we will have to monitor our bus shelters more frequently to make sure that graffiti is not, you know, there for, you know, long periods of time, if there is graffiti. Of course, graffiti is very much a priority for us for removal. If we've missed it, I apologize for that, but we will try to monitor the graffiti at the shelters more frequently.
And notwithstanding graffiti, whose responsibility is it to maintain the shelters?
I believe it is our responsibility. And, you know, if some of the shelters are metro shelters, however, I don't think it's something that we could wait on them to remove. So that is something that we need to stay on top of.
Perhaps, perhaps you can speak with staff and then write down certain locations so that we can take a look at those. I'll just pass it along to my colleagues.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to say thank you to the speakers that all spoke tonight.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
And I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. Pam, I'm on your side again about code enforcement. I know it was changed. Now, it's a voluntary thing. As you know, you live in the city, I live in the city. Rhonda, Bernadette live in the city all her lives. People don't volunteer things. So I would like to see this council revisit that code enforcement. And come up with a solution with that. But I don't think volunteer is gonna work.
Thank you. And I just say, Miss Falcone, thank you for the smoke-free report that you provided. And we'll be taking a look at that report. I want to thank you for that. Rhonda Abrams, thank you for acknowledging the validity of having the administrative citation and the code enforcement issue that you and Ms. London spoke of. And the last speaker spoke of the fireworks. Yeah, that's the kind of a problem. Every once in a while, you do hear a firework here and there. I didn't really get the fences broken part. Hopefully, the staff will clarify the fences broken part. And then we have the appropriate staff to address the fence which was mentioned there. With that, I'll close public comments and comments from the council. And we will move the agenda to our consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I have a question, number seven.
Okay, there's a question on...
Oh, no, I have nothing on that.
Okay, that's on the consent calendar.
So I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar as ready.
Okay, the motion been made by Kearney that we...
I'll second it.
Consent calendar is seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct the vote on the consent calendar.
Okay, and Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is a public hearing concerning adoption of development impact fees. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This item, as you recall, was continued from the August 16, 2021 meeting. Staff inadvertently left off a table, a div- table. We have since updated the resolution which is attached to the staff report. Again, I'll just be brief. There's the fees include traffic facilities, parks and recreation facilities, parking facilities, and arts and public places development impact fees. This is for new development, not existing residential, any new development or commercial or industrial. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions when we have it this time.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any clarifications needed from the staff before we open the public hearing? CNN, it is 7:08, I'm gonna declare the public hearing open. Any of those wishing to testify in this matter? Okay, CNN, there's no one that's wish to provide testimony. It is 7:09, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. I'm gonna bring it to the dice for discussion from the council. Any discussion on this item? If not, what's the pleasure of this body concerning this?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Motion's been made by Suarez, it's seconded by... Let me make sure, what's your motion? There's just like three, four items here. Probably to adopt A...
A, B, and C as recommended.
Yes, okay. And motion's been made, seconded by Pat Kearney. Let me see, is there anything the city attorney needs to read here? These are a couple of resolutions that you need to read there, right? Okay, with that being the case, are there any discussions or favor of the motion? CNN, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct the vote on item six.
Mr. Mayor, I'm waiting for you. All right, thank you. And Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is item seven, the member representative standing with the California Joint Power Insurance Authority.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I turn it over to Julian Lee, our public works director for the report, I just wanted to remind the council that this was an item that was one of the initiatives that you approved as part of the fiscal year 2021, '22 budget, our current fiscal year budget, to address this matter. When I first came on board, I did realize that the city did not have an ADA transition plan in place which could help protect the city from potential liability from lawsuits claiming that the city has not addressed ADA access issues. And so I thought it was important that we do that. It is a bit of an effort to do that. However, it's an important one. And with that, I'll turn it over to Julian for the staff report. And we also have Tim Mahoney from Access Consultants to also answer any questions that you might have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of council. As Kevin said, the city of Longdale currently do not have an ADA transition plan and may be a significant risk for claim and litigation. And also, California Joint Powers Insurance Authority offers an ADA assistant program which provides a financial assistance and resources to a member agency like the city of Longdale in assisting developing a complete transition plan. For the final assistance, the plan costs $66,900, whereas California JPIA will contribute $23,500, resulting in the city's cost to be $43,400. And disability access consultants, DAC, can provide the professional services preparing the ADA transition plan for the city as part of the ADA assistant program. Let me introduce Tim Mahoney from, he's the general manager from DAC and can provide you with the details of the plan.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight is really just to give you a quick overview of really what's involved with the building of an ADA self-evaluation transition plan. Really, just a couple of things to start out is that, under the ADA law, the city of Longdale is considered a Title II entity. There's six titles to that. But to that end, there's two basic components. There's the self-evaluation and the transition plan. The self-evaluation really focused on reviewing the policies, procedures, administration, and the programmatic elements that reside within the city, along with reviewing the facilities, parks, and public rights away. So we're looking for any potential discriminatory practices, any etiquette issues that we could work through with the ADA. But the transition plan is where the bulk of the effort goes to as well. And that's really focused on removing all the physical barriers that might exist within the city over time. And so to that end, just to kind of give you a flavor, pretty simple to understand what the transition plan's about, is that we want to go out and find where the physical barriers are. Secondarily, we want to have a recommendation. And by the way, this is just what's required under the law. Third is a schedule for bear removal. So when are we gonna fix it? So if you start to think about it, it's pretty logical, is that what problems do we have? How are we gonna fix it? When are we gonna fix it? And then ultimately, who's in charge of it? We're gonna designate a responsible party for that. That's usually your ADA/504 coordinator. I won't bore you with all that tonight, but that'll be part of the plan as well. And what's the purpose of it all? Well, I'll start with the last, the last item is that it's the law. You know, it's not only the right thing to do, it's the law. So it's also the best defense towards ADA litigation. So having a good faith effort showing that you have an ongoing commitment to remove barriers throughout the city, that's really the goal. One key component to this, though, it is your plan. So there's not one plan that's built the same across any Title II entity. You get to decide when to fix it, you get to decide what's the most important. We'll go through elements that build up to that. But having a good faith effort over time, and a sustainable effort, that's really your best defense towards ADA litigation. Doesn't mean you won't get it, just means that you have the ability to show you're making a good faith effort over time. As I mentioned before, is we have to have a good plan to identify the barriers. And then really, it's the overarching goal of the law is that we're having commitment personally with disabilities. Let's make sure they have the same access to programs, services, activities as everybody else in the community does. So, won't bore you too much again with the methodology, but just to give you a flavor of what we're gonna be looking at. So I mentioned the program, services, and activities, plus the buildings, parks, all your public rights away, intersections, curb ramps, bus shelters, for pro tonight. But we'll be looking at all of those things. We'll also do a full website compliance analysis. So if you think about one of the largest programs the city actually provides, and that would actually be your website, where does people, where do people go to get their information? You have a lot of things out here that are static. You have your bulletin boards and those things outside, but most people are going through your website. And we are certain, from a trending perspective, seeing a lot of litigation as relates to websites. Why? It's pretty easy to get on a website and to see how accessible it is. So we'll give you a report on that. We're gonna view all your facilities and parks, as I mentioned. The city's estimated about 56 linear miles of sidewalk, so we'll hit all the pavement there. And we'll begin those certainly when the contract's executed and we'll have a kickoff meeting to start those things. But just to give you a flavor, I won't go too far into this, but what are we looking for? So one of the major issues that we look at is paths of travel. So how do I get from the parking lot or the public right of way into the facility? Why do we want to look at that first? Well, I want to make sure people with disabilities have the ability to get into the facility because that's where the programs reside, right? So we're looking at slopes, cross slopes, detectable warnings, those areas, public rights away. These are not from the city of Longdale, but these are things that are probably emblematic of most cities, is that we look for changes in elevation or potential trip hazards, any obstructions within the sidewalk, what's going on with curb ramps and APS signals. So that's included but not limited to all these things. But just to give you a flavor there, parking certainly is a very important issue. So we're looking at parking spaces, the slope of the parking, the access aisles, the ISA symbols. So there's a lot of detail that go into these items. But as I mentioned before, is that the goal is to find the issues, but you have the ability to set your plan over time. So when we start getting facilities, as you can imagine, restrooms are a primary focus, along with other elements that would provide access. A lot of people don't think about this, but we look at all the parks and playgrounds and all the amenities that reside in the park. All of those are a program of the city. They think, you may think of them as a physical structures, but at the end of the day, we're providing access, whether it be in a shelter or, excuse me, we're providing programs, whether it be a grill, whether it be a playground, those type of things. So just some other elements to look at, the height of garbage cans. You wouldn't think about that, but how do I gain access to that, right? So that's a program that's offered by the city. And facilities working stairs, door thresholds, drinking fountains, door hardware, all of those elements. One of the things I described before is that, as good as the city is, is that having open forums to provide information is that one of the requirements under the law is to actually provide the opportunity for public input. So we have all sorts of methodologies that we'd employ. We can make that specific to the city. The law doesn't state how you're supposed to provide public input. It just requires that there are opportunities for that. And so to that end, we'll want to look at the general public, of course, constituents, city staff, organizations that serve individuals with disabilities. But these are things we'll work on with your team to implement as we move through the plan. And as we start talking about that, is that hopefully through that effort, you can think of public input a little bit like gap analysis, is that maybe some things you weren't aware of. So we have that information to come and just start building the plan long term. So when we start talking about the transition plan development, one of the biggest concerns is, man, we don't have enough money to fix all these things. That's always a concern. You're not alone, it's about 99.9% of everybody we work with. The beauty of a transition plan is that it is your plan, as I mentioned before. So you get to set the time and schedule of how you want to fix these items. Some may, and priority is a relative term. There is not a requirement of the law to make it a priority. It just states that you have to have estimated dates of bear removal. So to that end, is that, that's why each plan is different, is that some things that, if there's a risk management issue and an ADA issue where they intersect, well, that's probably something you want to look at right away. But there's plenty of items that we can fix that really can be cost neutral or part of your general maintenance as well. So those are all the elements we'll work through. But that's why the public input's important, certainly gathering all the data. And then we can look at a comprehensive strategy to make all those things happen. In closing, just a little bit further, that was alluded to before on the California JPIA, is that they're essentially paying for a third of your plan. So it's a very generous, but it's a very necessary. You can see where their issues are too, right? Is that this is a risk management issue, hopefully I didn't set that up. But if a risk management issue, so the California JPA is not only providing financial assistance, but certainly educational and professional assistance through our partnership with them. So that concludes my presentation. I'll open up for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions on the presentation? Yes, ma'am.
I do have one. Do you know if the input provides for bilingual?
I can.
Okay.
And so those are the items we work through. That's a common request. Just culturally, there's all sorts of things we work with. So yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I'm glad to see that this report that we're moving forward with this. For some reason, I thought we had, I already concluded, I know it came up before. I am the city's delegate to the JPIA, and the last city manager was looking into this, but I guess we kind of didn't get around to actually adopting the plan. So I'm glad to see that we actually are gonna adopt the plan so that we're in compliance and we have full access to those that are having challenges that we may not necessarily have, that they'll be able to participate as well. So I want to thank you for your report and for the plan. Are there any other questions?
I asked that one question.
Yes.
So after the first year, every year going forward, the cost of the software will be $2,000 a year?
I want to make sure I understand the question, is that moving forward, when you say adopt $2,000...
In our book, it says, the cost of continuing the software licensing effort...
Oh, you're asking a specific about the licensing.
And tracking database is $2,000.
Correct.
Going forward.
That's something you don't have to do. Let me take 10 seconds on this, is that ultimately, all of the data that's collected in the field, so all the barriers that we find within the city, is gonna reside inside the software. Okay? Now, you don't have to use DACTRAC, the software, moving forward. You don't have to. We can give you, it's always gonna be your data. I think what you'll hear from staff is that it is gonna be a tremendous amount of data. How do you manage the plan over time? And that's really your best defense, as I mentioned before, is that, so the software cost, anybody in the city will have access to it, so it's unlimited licensing and those things. But you're gonna want to be able to show, one, that you have all this data, and two, that you... and, two, that you're making progress. And you'll see the tools inside the software make that a little more efficient, but certainly, there's no obligation to use the software moving forward.
So, in your opinion, do you think from year to year, the software's going to be updated to amount that we have to?
We're talking about costing. So what I will say tonight is that the information we're going to give back to you is going to be quite a bit, and it's going to be probably costly in your mind, okay? I just want to say that out loud. That being said, it's still your plan, meaning that these plans can go 15, 20, 25 years. But we'll work with you to figure out what makes the most sense for that. So to your point, there does need to be consistent commitment towards fixing these items, but I'll tell you right now, you've already been doing that. You just haven't had a way to formally document that. And that's what the plan helps with as well. It's not like the city hasn't done anything with the ADA for the past 30 years. It has. In this case, we're just formalizing that.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you for the report.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, sir. All right, let's move ahead. Next item on our agenda is the city manager's.
Do we have to...
Actually, yes.
Yeah, let me back up just a second. I don't know if we need a motion to receive a foul or just a report. What do you say, Madam City Attorney?
No. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the manager to execute the MOU with the California JPIA for the ADA assistance program. So once you give authorization for city managers to sign, then we could proceed on with the ADA transition.
Okay, well, let's do that tonight.
Yes.
How about that? So let's do a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
With attachments.
Okay, so the motion's been made that we accept the staff recommendations along with the attachments by Kearney and seconded by Hockney-Gorman, and that the city manager have the authority to execute the member running, the understanding with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority.
Are there any questions or any bail on the motion? CNN, Madam City Clerk, please conduct.
And Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four zero.
That's here from the city manager. City manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just one item briefly. I just wanted to provide one more reminder to the community about the city's Blues Festival that will be happening this coming Saturday, September 11th, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. And again, this is our annual event that will be at Jane Addams Park. We will have four bands there. There will be food trucks. We'll also have a vaccine clinic. And best of all, the event is free for everyone to come and enjoy. So we invite all of you to invite your friends and your family to come enjoy a nice day of good music and in the sun, and sunshine with the rest of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Suarez.
That I can remember, I attended on August 27th the South Bay City's Council of Government Board of Directors meeting. There was a lengthy discussion regarding... We had a panel of former police officers or current and former law enforcement officials who talked about use of force and different things to look out for with regards to your law enforcement department. So that was that, and I think that was it for me. I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Hockney-Gorman. Yes, ma'am.
I attended two meetings. The first one was a Zoom meeting with Metro, which we found to be very... It's educational as well as is learning to work together and bringing up the City of Landale's concerns. It's going very well. And also, I attended the Caltrans meeting. Again, it was a Zoom meeting. And once again, coming together with them and voicing our concerns and getting some issues addressed has been a really good outcome for the city, and we're hearing lots of compliments on the way that the property along the freeway is being handled. Thank you, Kevin, for mentioning the Blues Festival. I look forward to seeing everybody out there on Saturday, as well as this coming Saturday, the Landale High School, classes of '78 through '83 are having its reunion, a yearly reunion, SSS, Second Saturday of September reunion. So if anybody needs any information, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
And I just have one thing to piggyback on the Blues Festival. Make sure you wear patriotic colors because you know the day is 9/11, so make sure you wear red, white, and blue out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I too attended the Metro meeting concerning the sea line extension through Landale, forming the Green Line. I also attended the Caltrans meeting as well. I want to echo that both of these meetings are very productive, and I'm glad we continue to have both of these meetings with Metro and Caltrans. Of course, these are two separate meetings. And I also attended the regular meeting of the Sanitation District of Los Angeles, Los Angeles County, where we discuss all things waste. And last but not least, of course, the Blues Festival. We're glad that the Blues Festival is back. We missed it last year, and as people are starting to to bring back their festivals and outdoors events, I'm glad to see that we likewise are bringing back our Blues Festival. I'm just going to urge everyone to, if they can, it's not mandatory, but to have your mask on because the Delta variant is real. People are still becoming ill, what have you, so we have to have fun and a good time, at the same time, in a safe manner. It is outdoors, so we do have to look. So don't have a camera waiting on me if I don't have my, you know... Mine is on all times because it is outdoors. But if you're face to face with someone, you know, you might want to have on your mask. So not to preach to anyone like that. But I want to thank the staff for putting that on and putting that together kind of at the last minute because we wasn't really sure how things are going to shape up or what have you, but I want to thank the staff. I see the directors itching to say a few words to promote the event. Step right on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one important detail, the city is not providing seating to try to encourage social distancing for the pandemic, so we're suggesting that everyone brings their own seating. You know, we have beautiful green grass. If you don't want to bring a seat, we have grass. But we're encouraging low-back lawn chairs, blankets, whatever you need to bring to make yourself comfortable.
Sunscreen as well.
Yes, sunscreen as well. Okay, with that, that's all for tonight. Let's see here, there's something I have to read. We did have a closed session before we adjourned. Quick closed session, I assume. Let's ask the city attorney to give the provision from which we will go under closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with the city's negotiators regarding labor relations, labor negotiations. The full description of the closed session is available on the agenda, which is available at the front.
Okay, withstand the adjournment for closed session. After the term from closed session, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give a report on the closed session.
The city council met in closed session on one item. The city council was updated on the item, and there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. The next scheduled meeting of the Landale City Council will be held at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, September 20. In these council chambers, it's now 8:38. This meeting is adjourned.